Good evening, everyone. Welcome, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing through any particular electronic device. So at this time, we'll have a moment of silence. And I apologize, I officially call the meeting to order. So if you please all stand and join Alderman Jobchin in leading us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Crump, please call the roll for tonight. Ardone?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, welcome, everyone. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you have your cellphone, please put it on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council at the particular time, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When you address the council, please address the council as a body and not any one individual. We'll be respectful of you, please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will an Alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for July 10, 2024? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Merritt, City Administrator, update anything tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to turn this over to our Parks and Recreation Director Chad Dyson to lead us in a special employee recognition.
Mayor and City Council, tonight I have the distinct honor of recognizing Daniel Sheridan, Performing Arts Supervisor, for recently being named the Quad City Arts Lloyd Schoenman Community Impact Award winner for Arts Educator of the Year. Each year, the Quad City Arts awards one outstanding individual in the arts with the Arts Educator of the Year Award. This award recognizes the community impact for all arts educators and all arts disciplines. As Performing Arts Supervisor for the Davenport Parks and Recreation Department, Daniel oversees the Davenport Junior Theater programs and facilities. Under Daniel's leadership, the nation's second-oldest children's theater has grown from 300 enrollments and eight staff to today, we serve over 2,000 participants year-round with a team of 40 part-time instructors and support staff. Daniel's love of the arts started with Davenport Junior Theater as a youth in the '90s, as a performer, and later as a teenage staffer, instructor, director, designer, artistic director, and most notably as our performing arts supervisor. His dedicated teaching has impacted thousands of youth in the area by empowering them to be brave, be bold, and have fun. One award nominator stated, "Daniel is a consummate leader, artist, and arts educator, as well as a truly exceptional individual." Through his work with students and fellow artists, he has made an impact that will undoubtedly be felt for decades in both our arts community and beyond as his students grow into adulthood. I thank you for allowing me the time to recognize Daniel, and Daniel Sheridan is here to say a few words.
Thanks, Chad. Yeah, thank you so much. I do just want to say, one of the reasons I think as a theater artist I fit so well in the Parks and Recreation Department is artists are scrappy individuals and we use every piece of resource we can to figure out how to serve a mission. And I see Chad and Teresa and the entire Parks and Recreation team do that day in and day out, and I love it. But, you know, being recognized as Arts Educator of the Year as part of this city team is not just me. I'd be remiss not to mention the 16 years of arts professionals, volunteers, students who have poured their heart into Davenport Junior Theater. And one reason I think the program is so exceptional is we are all, throughout the decades, just laser-focused and faithful in the mission of four kids buy kids. If you ever come and see something at junior theater onstage is the kids performing, but not only that, they're backstage managing the crew, running the props tables, they're running the lights and sound, they're managing the front of house. They're getting that community experience of trying to figure out how to create something together and then lift it up and offer it to the public, and they learn that every single person matters. And as they learn that, they learn to communicate with clarity and confidence and creativity, and these are the kinds of citizens we need in Davenport who can get up and speak their mind constructively and help move our city forward. So it is a beautiful program, and I'm proud to lead it. I'm also very excited, just so everyone knows, about the ongoing legacy of the Annie Wittenmeyer campus. That campus goes all the way back to the Civil War and was housing for youth and for orphans, and the opportunity to revitalize that campus and invest money by working with Chris Ailes, a local developer, I think is a huge opportunity for housing for seniors and also workforce development. And I know everybody in the junior theater community applauds that effort. You know, obviously, the timeline is tight. As Chad mentioned, we're a very large performing arts program. We're actually just, I don't know if everyone's aware of this, but between Chicago, Minneapolis, St. Louis, and Omaha, we are the largest performing arts program in that Midwest region. And actually, we can't even find anything comparable in the Chicagoland area. We're it, like, we have it right here in Davenport. And this transition is in front of us, and we look forward to evolving and evolving with Davenport. You know, we can't stay the same, we have to constantly be evolving, but time is tight, and we really just look forward to your ongoing support. And if you ever want to visit junior theater and see how we maximize every square inch of our 43,000 square feet and our 12 little buildings, I'd love to show you around. And we look forward to working together and figuring it out and carrying this forward and serving kids. So, yeah, so thank you for letting me share, and I'm a Davenport kid myself. I grew up over by Gunchee's Pizza, went to Davenport Schools, went to St. Ambrose, so the community means a lot to me. And being recognized in front of all of you and my fellow citizens means a lot. So thanks, Chad, thanks to the team, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Merritt, anything else? Okay. Will an Alderman please move approval of the report on the committee the whole for July 17, 2024?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have seven appointments and one proclamation. I'll read all the appointments and then ask for a motion to approve. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Christine Powers is a new appointment from the 7th Ward. Zoning Board of Adjustment, John Clefman is a new appointment. Citizens Advisory Committee, specifically the Grievance Subcommittee, Austin Byrd, Cassandra Cooper, Nancy Nolan, Elizabeth Hodges, and Tammy Lord. Is there a motion to approve all those?
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation, it's the 50th, U.A. Quad City Times BIC 7 Race Week, July 20th to 27th. That will be read by Alderwoman Burkholder. Alderwoman Burkholder, please.
Thank you. The City of Davenport, Iowa proclamation, whereas the BIC 7 race has been a cherished annual tradition in Davenport, Iowa, drawing runners, walkers, spectators, and visitors from across the nation and around the world to our city on the last full weekend of July. And whereas, the BIC 7 has grown over the past 50 years to become the premier seven-mile road race in the United States, attracting thousands of participants each year, including Olympic champions and elite athletes showcasing their talents on our city streets. And whereas, the BIC 7 is named in honor of Bic Spiderbeck, a renowned jazz musician and native of Davenport, thereby celebrating not only the athletic excellence but also our rich cultural heritage. And whereas, the BIC 7 race contributes significantly to the economic vitality to our community, bringing substantial business to local hotels, restaurants, and shops, and generating a positive economic impact for Davenport. And whereas, the event fosters the spirit of community, health, and fitness, encouraging people of all ages and abilities to participate, with the addition of such special events as the Quick BICS, Junior BICS, Senior BICS, supporting physical activity and healthy lifestyles. And whereas, the BIC 7 is made possible through the dedication and hard work of countless volunteers, organizers, sponsors, and community partners whose commitment and enthusiasm ensure the race's success year after year. And whereas, the BIC 7 serves as a symbol of unity and pride for the residents of Davenport, showcasing our city's rich heritage and commitment to fostering a spirited, engaged, and united community. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City of Davenport, the Council of Davenport, do hereby proclaim July 20th through 27th, 2024, as the 50th Quad City BIC Times Week. Oh, I'm sorry, BIC 7 Week, in Davenport, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this remarkable event that exemplifies the strength, vitality, and community spirit of our beloved city, dated this 24th of July, 2024. And I believe Michelle Jering, I move this proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
(inaudible). Yes.
Ready, one, two, three.
Mayor Mattson and the council, on behalf of the Quad City Times, the Corn Boat Running Club, the thousands of runners, walkers, volunteers, our sponsors, and community members, I would like to extend a heartfelt gratitude to the City of Davenport for being the gracious hosts of our seven-mile race. Your unwavering support and dedication these past 50 years have been instrumental in making this event a cherished tradition and a highlight of our community. You provide the perfect backdrop for our race, from the banks of the Mississippi to the radical hospitality. You create an atmosphere that keeps runners and walkers coming back year after year. Much of the success of our race is a testament to your commitment to fostering a healthy and vibrant community. Thank you for your continued partnership and for helping us create lasting memories for all. We look forward to many more years of collaboration, celebration, where we can all run with the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jering, we're honored to have you. Okay. Petitions and communications, anything from any older folks? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yes, just a reminder that we will not be having council meeting next week. It is the 5th Wednesday, and so we will start back up the first full week in August. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I want to say a few things that have been on my spirit that I feel like I need to say. It seems like there's always a form of gaslighting that I, as a councilman, I get to see and I'm tired of. I'm tired of, we have lived life experiences, me, myself, I have constituents with lived life experiences, and I get explanations the house down. I get explained to me, you can't explain to me a way that somebody has felt something that's happened to them personally, something that's happened to them in their life. It's interesting to me that I have to sit on the Code of Conduct Committee for Alderman and Mayor old staff, but when I get explained to me what's happening out in my community, it just breaks my heart, because you can't explain away an incident, you can't explain away somebody's feelings, you can't explain away how you, they, so my mouth is slick. Everybody up here knows my mouth is slick. I own my slickness. So if I was ever inappropriate, sorry, but it needs to be said. So with that being said, I say that gaslighting, we talk about transparency and trust and truth, I don't want to take away from the gentleman that got his award this evening, but isn't it interesting that when things have to move along, we say stuff like, we can't stay the same? So it's interesting to me that folks will say that to us, to sway us, to get things that they need from the Alderman so they can get the votes that they need. So things can't stay the same, but we all need that fair and equal treatment. We all do. And I would stand 10 toes down about that. But on a positive note, no, we have to finish it with Sonya Massey, two hours away from us. She called 911 for help. She's no longer with us. But on a positive note, I'm on my way to DC next week to deal with restorative justice for the black and brown community and the less fortunate. You'd think that more people want to go to this, I shouldn't be the only one that's going to be, going to something that my life has revolved around it. I don't need to be trained on something in my life, but it's just nice to see like-minded individuals that see things that are out there and know that there's problems in their community, and they want to help and make that change. So I'll be in DC next week, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, Kelly. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. We have two. The first one is a second consideration for an ordinance or case, ORD 24-03, being the request of Grace Real Estate to amend the principal use standards in subsection 17.0.08.030, Neighborhood Commercial Establishment of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding daycare center and medical dental offices permitted uses within a neighborhood commercial establishment. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move second consideration? Motion and a second. Any discussion from older folks? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am, will be in a moment, if you can come back to me if anyone has any other comments. We've talked about some concerns about some of this, of the usage in neighborhoods, basically neighborhoods, due in part much to the space that is there and the, especially in our older neighborhoods, the more people having cars than when the neighborhoods were built and all of that, and difficulty with parking. So tonight, I will be making a motion to remove medical and dental offices as permitted use going forward. This is our second vote, but I will be, but certainly if people wanted to, other people want to speak first, I will hold that until they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Alderwoman McGinnis, would you like to talk again?
Sure, I'll just, I will be making a, yes. I'll make a motion to remove from this rezoning, medical and dental offices as a permitted use.
There's a motion and a second. We'll call on removing that. Mr. Crump? Lynch?
I don't know. Is that an answer? I, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with why we're removing it, or I guess I have more questions. I apologize if I'm not speaking in line here, but I, I just, removing something entirely is just something I wasn't prepared to do, so I'm just, I don't know, is, what's the process here?
So would you like more discussion, or would you like to vote no?
I would like more discussion.
But there is a motion and a second. And any other discussion? Alderwoman McGinnis again?
Unless, and certainly if anyone's willing to talk, so part of the discussion, sorry, I'm sorry, part of the discussion about, sorry.
It was Alderwoman Lynch's, you're good with letting her speak. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Sorry. When we are looking at, this is a global change, would be a global change to neighborhood uses for, and there are a number of, there are a number of neighborhood commercial establishments that are allowed within our four neighborhoods, you know, within our neighborhoods. This was brought forth asking that daycare centers and medical and dental offices be allowed in old commercial buildings. The concern I had expressed in the first round in last week, and this is, so this is the third, the second reading that we've gotten, we're voting on the second, is tonight, was that medical and dental offices have, you know, a fair amount of staff, they also have patients coming and going. Most of these old commercial buildings are in our older neighborhoods that are sometimes pressed for parking because they were not built often as residential, they're residential areas, they were often built before people had a lot of cars, or even had a car, and now many of the buildings are multifamily, and so you have, you know, many people with cars, and so there's a lot of pressure on parking that doesn't necessarily come with a daycare center, because people are there with children and they're dropping them off and they're leaving. But I felt that medical and dental offices were, there are people parking on the street, you'd certainly have people coming to visit medical and dental offices. We did have staff produce a map which showed there were, around in this area, there were, and the particular location that was being, that kind of brought this change, this global change to the entire city forth, was on Telegraph, which is an old church building, and the, one of the comments was it would allow, you know, other buildings along Telegraph to become, you know, other uses, a commercial uses. Well, they're, it's really mostly residential there, so the logic didn't make a lot of sense in this particular case as well. But in looking across the city and looking across neighborhoods, I am always, you know, sensitive to the need for residents to be able to park, and, you know, the smaller amount of parking generally, because there tend to be narrow lots, and there tend to be houses that, again, are now multifamily, and so there's a lot more, there are a lot more cars than there were when a neighborhood was built in 1910 or whenever it was built. So that is why I'm bringing forth to remove medical and dental offices. I don't believe there's a particular pressure on needing to find spaces for medical and dental offices around the city, and so there's, there tended, there seem to be a number of locations that would be available for this kind of usage. So that's the rationale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since we haven't started the vote, Alderman Kelly?
Thank you so much. So I want to speak on behalf of this as someone, we've all lived in different places. I've lived in Dallas, Texas, and San Diego, and stuff like this was really instrumental in the neighborhoods that I lived in, one, because not everybody has a vehicle, two, it's easy to access and walk to. So when I came home and got into HIV and STDs, I worked at the corner of Sixth and Harrison at the old CAC building. Not everybody had a car, but everybody could access that office. So it's interesting to me, so I'm gonna go back to, we can't stay the way, the same, but when we build multiplexes in all these apartments, we don't think about traffic. We're going from one ways to two ways, we don't think about traffic. But now all of a sudden, affordable healthcare and babysitting, I need to think about traffic and vehicles? I need to stay not slick with the mouth, but I'm gonna say, mm, I'm not with that. So I don't want to take it off, because I just think we have to have rules and regulations that when this is being brought into the neighborhoods, that there are buildings that can occupy this, and you can do this, and some of our, I have an older neighborhood just like Alderman and the 3rd Ward. So I understand her concerns, but I know there's buildings that can actually take this, it could take it on. So let's just have rules and regulations, that's what legal is for, that's what the employees are for, rules and regulations to move forward, and let's assist some people that actually need some assisting.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have questions, so obviously this is, came, just got sprung on, I didn't know that this was something that anyone in the council was considering. Can someone from staff please explain where this came from initially? If it's a staff recommendation to include them, or if that has changed from the staff's perspective? I mean, unfortunately, I don't think I have enough information to cast a vote one way or another at this time. I know a vote will be forced if there's a motion on the floor, but I don't have enough information to do so.
Sure. Laura Berkeley Development, Neighborhood Services. So we don't officially have a change in staff recommendation. I had deep discussions with Alderwoman McGinnis about her concerns regarding medical, dental. I think the concern that was discussed with me is that there is such a large variety to medical office, that it would be hard to anticipate how that would impact a neighborhood. And we're talking, there's just such a large variety of types of buildings and types of communities, that it might be something harder to regulate, especially through the zoning board of adjustment and special use process. So that's the concern that was raised to me, and I understand that fully, and will defer to the council on how they want to move forward with this process.
And was this vetted by our legal department?
I, I.
Do you have knowledge, or does someone else from staff that can answer that?
Did, Laura, did this item go through legal review before it was placed on the agenda? The ordinance?
Oh, the ordinance, yes. We always vet all of our zoning text changes and amendments through legal, yes.
Okay, and there were no concerns presented by legal regarding the use of including medical or dental offices?
Um, legally, normally.
Or were there any, I should ask?
I mean, so normally, they're reviewing the ordinance itself, we rely on the Plan of Zone Commission for any concerns that it would raise. None was raised at the time, so.
Okay. I have one more question, probably not for you, Director Berkeley, thank you. I understand that there's a pending motion on the floor, but further discussion is being taken. Is there a way where the motion can be retracted and perhaps the matter be tabled to allow the council time to gather more information before making a decision one way or another?
If the respective person that made the motion and second would pull that back, then we can continue discussion and other things can be looked at.
I would be willing.
Okay. If you're willing to, yep, okay, Alderwoman Newton, willing to let Alderwoman McGinnis talk?
I made the motion, I would be certainly willing to pull it back. I don't know if you're asking, and I wouldn't have, I wouldn't necessarily make this motion to table this, we have one more cycle to discuss this. I did talk about this last week around the dais, but, but, that's, 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 doesn't matter. If it needs to be tabled or it needs to be delayed, do you want to table it, or do you want to?
Okay, so would you be willing to retract if so be?
Yeah, absolutely.
Who made the second? Alderman Jobchin, would you be willing to? Okay, so I'll continue with any other discussion, and then I'll go back to Alderwoman McGinnis and Jobchin and see if they retract, and then we can continue discussion if you'd like to do something else. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go back to Alderwoman McGinnis.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Alderman, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Actually, that's what I was gonna propose, was to withdraw the amendment. I think what Alderwoman McGinnis was doing is we tried to, if we're going to do serious amendment changes to an ordinance, we try to put it, put it out there in the second cycle as opposed to the third cycle, so that everybody has a fair shot of knowing what's coming, and she did put that out there to the council last week. But it does sound like there's a lot of uncertainty, so I would rather not vote to remove that portion of the update, but rather give us another cycle to consider it, and I don't know if there's more information that staff can push out to council, but then we can make, we can have a more thorough discussion and then discuss that amendment from Alderwoman McGinnis during the next cycle. Thanks.
Sorry, thank you. So Alderwoman McGinnis, would you withdraw?
I will make a motion to withdraw my amendment.
Alderman Jobchin, you agree?
I would second the.
Okay, we're good. So you've withdrawn your motion and second. Is there any discussion on the original consideration? Okay, Brian, please call the roll on the original consideration. Newton?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yeah.
And Reinards?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The ordinance moves to third consideration. Number two is a motion approving a 22905 agreement with Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railway for the Riverfront Quiet Zone Project. Is there any public with comment? Please remember, love to know your name, order, address, if you're not from here.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, and I'd be brief, I want to speak against this. I've lived several times near the railroad, and it's one of those noises where you know if you move next to the railroad, the railroad exists before you move in. It's one thing if they bring it in after you move. If you, if they want to bring in a loud noise next door to you, it's different if you already live there versus if you move in next, you know, if you move in next door to the racetrack and the races are every Friday, you know they're every Friday, whereas if they want to start something new. I found living next to the railroad kind of comforting, sometimes you would feel the railroad, you'd have a little bit of sway, and you get used to it. And one time, there was an earthquake, and some people felt it, it was a minor earthquake, and some people felt it, and I thought, I was awake and I was home, and I probably felt it and thought it was the railroad going by. But last week, they mentioned that the liability for car accidents shifts from the railroad to the city. Legal liability for people who say of railroad hit a car and killed five people, that instead of the railroad being liable... of the railroad being liable for that financially, the city of Davenport could be held financially liable for that, something about how the gates come down and dot, dot, dot. And I think it would be really stupid for the city of Davenport to take financial liability in order to have quiet. I did hear someone mention, and I agree with that, there's a problem if trains block a, a street for more than five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, half an hour, 45 minutes, you know, if a train is blocking the street you need to get home on for 45 minutes, that's an issue. But that long delay seems to be separate from the quiet zone thing. So I just think it would be really, really stupid for the city to take financial liability for possible future deaths and car accidents and train accidents if the railroad company is not legally liable for those accidents, for the city to say, we'll take legal liability for those accidents, we haven't even paid off the 324 Main Street and now we're gonna take responsibility for future train wrecks? So I would vote no on this, with a real concern about trains being on the track for too long. I think five minutes is more than long enough for me, but, but that's a separate issue from the noise.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Steve.
Sir, please, please come to the podium.
And I'd like to voice my opinion.
Sir, please come to the podium first.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to voice my opinion is I think you're taking on a lot more cost than just liability. Right now the railroad is the one that is responsible for the legal patrol of that, that area. You're gonna have, put your police department in control of patrolling it. That's gonna be cost of extra officers, which I know these guys back here have been working really hard to keep the, the city safe. So I don't think it's a wise idea in that manner. In the same manner that these people have been talking about is insurance liability, it's just gonna take and put another burden on the taxes of the people of this city and the young people that are trying to buy homes and make a, a decent living for themselves here with everything that's going on. I think it's very unwise to put that burden off of the business that's already paying a patrol to patrol those tracks, which they should be legally patrolling them more if there is a problem in that area. As far as the noise, I'm with the other gentleman. You move next to a train track, you better be ready for the noise. You move next to the interstate, you better be ready for the trucks to take and run their, their brake. You have an air brake ordinance, all you gotta do is tell these, these railroad companies slow down, you only need to run the horn once instead of 20 times. But to take over that liability and as a taxpayer, to pay another officer and put the burden on gentlemen now that are probably got so much on their plate already trying to keep us safe in other areas of the city, I think is a big mistake. I think you need to keep that with the railroad's responsibility and not ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
William Pamperin, Davenport, Seventh Ward. As retired engineer on a railroad, as these other gentlemen have stated, I have come across many times close calls. All right? It's not fun, it's very scary and especially when you're grade crossings, grade crossing is at level. It is federally mandated that I signal for any crossings, a signal sequence. All right? That's two long, one short and one to occupy that crossing. There is a, a, a sign telling you when to stir up that sequence and it goes by how fast the train is supposed to be going. Now, if I should have an accident, which I've had in the past, unfortunately, didn't kill anybody, but come close, it is also very distressing for the engineer. The engineer also has a possibility of seeing a Davenport or emotional distress if something like that should happen. The railroad down here is gonna be a 10 mile an hour limit, has to be because of the city and the crossings and the bridge and the yard. 10 mile an hour takes one mile. Takes six minutes for one mile of that train. When you're running 8,000 foot, 9,000 foot, 10,000 foot trains, all right, you're looking at 12 minutes. Add a little more because the signals come down. When the signal comes down, you ever wonder about that little red light at the end of the, of the signal, of the arm? That's the same as running a red light. All right? You see people around the gates all the time, walking around the gates. You can put all the fences you want, I've seen them crawl over top the fences, get in between the fences. And you think that's fun? That's not fun, believe me. I panic and I'm worried about these people and I'm like, my heart races. So when it comes down to the liability factor, yes, I can see, you're taking and, and basically saying a federal law is not good enough for Davenport and taking on responsibility and liability of all grade crossing accidents, pedestrian crossing accidents and vehicular crossing accidents. Now the amount of train, considering how long it is, could be blocking the crossings for more than, I'll say 15 minutes, I'd say an average 15 minutes. How many people do you know are gonna stand there for 15 minutes? That train's going slow enough, I've seen them where they jump on the side of the train, walk between the cars, which is extreme dangerous, and get off on the other side. And then they laugh about it. Little do they know how close to death they could have been, been. I urge that Davenport drop this proposal once and for all because there is, like I said, a federal law mandating I have to signal for the crossings. Yes, the horns are allowed, sometimes they do a little excessive amount of horn, but there are reasons for that. If I see somebody crossing against the light or crosswalk two blocks down, I am by law required to lay on that horn. Okay? I cannot stop on a dime. Sometimes it might take up to a mile, sometimes a lot less, depending on length of train, the weight and so forth. The amount of crossings you have downtown Davenport here are, are quite a bit, they're close, so there's not a lot of time to do the sequence through each crossing. There are alternatives that can be done to relieve, alleviate the excessive amount of horn. There are electronic horns, they're about half the, the loudness decimal that the train horns have, and there are other short-term cycle signaling they can do. Now train horns are requ, are actually regulated by the FRA. They have to be so loud, but yet cannot be excessively loud. I can't tell you right off in, I have to look up the decimals or what they're regulated at. But as an engineer, it's my job to protect the public and let people know that I'm coming up to a crossing. Now, the echoing through the city with the amount of commercial buildings made into apartment complexes, yeah, you're gonna have people that are gonna be down there and-
Thank you, sir.
-concerned about the noise.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, Judith Lee, Second Ward. I brought this idea up years ago for quiet zones and it sounds like the time has now come. I've read the regulations, what they're saying is correct about the shift of liability from the railroad to the city. My primary concern is that we have enough liability insurance to cover this increased liability. And we do know that people get stupid around trains, that cars get, you know, drivers get stupid around trains. We've already had accidents, we've had a decoupling downtown, we've had a derailment down at Nahant Marsh. I, and so we know that there can be problems on the railroad side and on the people who are doing the crossings. So I just want to make sure if we're gonna move ahead with this and accept that liability, that we also have sufficient liability insurance and are willing to take that risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with public? Very good. Counsel, I see Alderman Reinhards.
Thank you.
I apologize. Will an alderman please move this motion?
Second.
Thank you for reminding me. Alderman Reinhards.
I have a question for legal. Given a situation where the gates are down and the lights are flashing and somebody ignores them and proceeds across, what would our liability be?
Alderman, the, the Federal Railroad Administration has created the, a rule on establishment of quiet zones that are permitted to be established by local municipalities. The regulations require that in establishing a quiet zone, an application has to be provided to the Federal Railroad Administration with the plans and specifications for improving the crossing, which would include things like four-way gates that block the traffic from all directions. Sometimes they require installation of medians on the crossing so that cars can't drive around the crossing gates. And, and there are various other technical requirements that have to be met. If the FRA approves the quiet zone, it is, it is an approval received from the federal government. It's not the city of Davenport establishing a quiet zone, it's the federal government establishing a quiet zone. If in fact that is the case, which is what is being proposed here, then there is no shifting of any liability to the city, provided that the city is not negligent in, in, in handling the railroad crossing, which typically it would not be because the signals, the crossing itself, those are all property of the railroad. So for instance, if the, if the railroad gates did not work properly and somebody was involved in an accident, typically that would not involve any liability to the city because the city has no responsibility for maintaining either the crossing or the, or the signals that warn people of an oncoming train. So I guess what I'm, what I'm explaining to you is that if the city follows this process that is being proposed, submits an application to the FRA and the FRA approves that application, then the action to establish the quiet zone is an action of the Federal Railroad Administration and under their regulations, there is not a provision that would impose any additional liability on the city other than would presently exist today. The condition of the roadway, that, that type thing, the city already has that liability.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for this motion.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Burkeholder?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
T. Done?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
And Reinhards?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion's approved. Is there a motion and a second to approve all items on consent?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for all items on consent, please.
Ardone?
Yes.
T. Done?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Burkeholder?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Reinhards?
Yes.
And Grip?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. Consent's approved. Next item, are there, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions that are nonpartnernite? Okay, well, next, we'll have an executive session, so will an alderman please move to go into executive session to evaluate the professional competency of individuals pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5 and discuss strategy of council matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5. Before, is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, but before I ask Mr. Krupp to call the roll, I just want to let everybody know, the council will adjourn the meeting after the execution, after the executive session and will not return to council chambers. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll to go into executive session.
Jobin? Burkeholder? Newton?
Yes.
Reinhards?
Yes.
T. Done?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. I'd ask the council folks to, as best as you can, move up to the executive session. Thank you, we will adjourn from there.